to order. Today is Monday, June 7th, and we are meeting at the Ed Center. And we are really happy to host the Assembly today. We will start with our roll call. So Jennifer, if you will do the roll call for the Assembly, then we'll have Katie do the roll call for the Board, the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Rivera. Vice Chair Weddington. Ms. Allard.
She's on the line, I think. Oh, not yet. Okay.
I do believe Ms. Allard is going to be calling in. Mr. Constant?
Mr. Constant is excused.
Mr. Dunbar? Is Mr. Dunbar also excused?
Yes, Mr. Dunbar is excused.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. LaFrance? Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Zalatelle? Ms. Zalatelle is on the line.
And for the school board, President Bellamy?
Present.
Member Halloman?
Present.
Member Donley?
Here.
Member Higgins?
Here.
Member Lessons?
Here.
Member Jacobs?
Present.
And Member Wilson?
Present.
Madam Chair, you do have a call. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge with gratitude that the Ninea people, past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. At this time, before I continue with the agenda, I'd like to acknowledge that we have four new board members. I'm sure you have met them at some point during the campaign season, but I'd like to introduce our new board members at this time. Starting with Dora Wilson, Pat Higgins, and you guys think of something real short to say because you're going to do that next. And then we have Carl Jacobs, and we have Kelly Lessons. So we are happy to have them on the school board. And once we, I think now's a good time to have you guys just say a few words to the Assembly. Be nice, though.
I've had the pleasure of working with a few of the Assembly members in the past, and it's always been my pleasure. And I'm actually very honored to be here as a school board representative, now representing our kids and our community. So thank you, guys, for being here as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
I guess I'll simply say two of them I've worked with on the school board, so that are here present physically. And of course, I was on the school board before and worked with most of the others, and I appreciate the opportunity. I find these meetings to be beneficial.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure to be here. As someone who engages in the Assembly meetings via YouTube regularly, I appreciate the work of our Assembly, and I'm looking forward to productive meetings going forward.
Thank you.
And I'll echo the delight I have in being here. But I'm also going to add that I was just at an event at the Alaska Native Heritage Center where the new third grade curriculum was being introduced. And it is a great reminder of the important work that education does in our community. It was a really good kick in the pants, and I'm excited for that curriculum moving forward, and I'm excited for all of our kids.
Perfect segue, Member Lessons. Perfect segue. I'll pass this around. But we kicked off our, we celebrated. We didn't kick off anything. We celebrated our new third grade curriculum in Alaska Studies for Third Grade. It was amazing. The book is amazing. It's translated into how many languages? Seven other languages. It truly is amazing. So I'll pass this around so that you can see it. But it really was, it was a great, you had to be there to really feel the action. But I am very proud, and this is the work that we have to do. So I'll pass that around. And since, the good thing about sharing these is that I kind of get to do a little bit of my own thing, just a little bit. And so we have another celebration today. Today is Chair Rivera's birthday. And yes, we are going to sing one stanza, just one round of Happy Birthday. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, Chair Rivera. Happy Birthday to you. Anyway, thank you. Happy Birthday. All right, now we can segue back to our agenda. Before, though, the mics, we don't have a mic for everyone, but there's a mic in between that you'll have to share. And when you are speaking, please speak into the mic or we won't be able to hear you online, or they won't be able to hear you online. And for those individuals, the Board, the Assembly members who are online, if you need to talk, just text Katie or Jennifer, and then star six, and then we'll be able to hear you if you want to speak during the meeting. All right. So now we will go back to our official agenda. Thank you for indulging me. I need, we're now at the approval of our minutes. Are there any additions? deletions, corrections to the minutes from our March 8th meeting? Any corrections? Okay, seeing no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes?
It's moved in second to approve. Are there any opposition, opposes to approve in the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Now we're at our agenda. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the omissions with the agenda?
Moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. Any opposition to approving the agenda? And for the record, I see Member Weddington has joined us. Thank you. Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. I mean, I'm sorry, the agenda is approved as presented. And that brings us to item D, which is our financial planning. And I will turn that over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we begin the actual present PowerPoint, I just want to share information. The question was about really funding what we call S R 3, the education funding that's in the relief funds. And after I go, I think there's a municipality presentation as well in regard to the expenditures. Katie's going to pass around a couple of memos, and I just want to use this as a backdrop for the prior funds that had come in. We had shared this information with the Assembly. It was requested on several different occasions, and we shared the board memo at those times. So we'll review that and then share the present work that is in action in regard to the S R 3 funds. So the first memorandum is memorandum 2, 002, and the date on it is July 10th, 2020. And this is the time that the Board did the final approval, if you will, of the first grant award, which, as you can see, it was a little over $12 million. And this is information that had been presented to the Assembly last summer. But if you recall, the discussions about elementary health teachers in regard to our budget and putting those F T E back in if grant monies were accepted. And then information technology with a little bit of information, blended learning, summer school, P P E, equitable outcomes, and our charter schools, of course, receive funding according to the title disbursement. If you look on the third page, it says non-public schools. The manner in which these funds were distributed were inclusive of all schools and children. And so we, our CFO, Jim Anderson, met with the private schools and those that accepted the money. It equated to about $360,000. There was a potential for about three quarters of a million. But of course, when you receive the money, you also, you know, there's a lot, there's strings attached to it, if you will. And so some of our private schools did not accept the money. So that was the first influx, if you will, of federal funds. And the second one is an April 20th, 2021 memo. And these were what we call S R 2. They were actually the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Grant. And A S D received $50 million at that time. And this was built into the FY '21, or next year's budget, by the former Board in the approval of that process. And I want to focus on the first, preserving the P T R in A S D. And a little bit of background, a large sum of the money, nearly $29 million, went to continuing with our staffing into this next year. What had occurred in the year of the pandemic, after we hired teachers the prior year, when we started school, we had over 4,000 students enter statewide correspondence or private schools or leave the state. And so the metrics that we use, the algorithms to determine our enrollment took a hit, and it was very difficult to know who's coming back, who won't. And the Board utilized in our budget for FY '21 to stabilize our employees, to be able to keep our staffing, and we're building capacity to bring students back. Losing our teachers and then having kids enroll later would have been a crisis for us, really having not much information about students that will come back, other than just parents saying, yes, we're going to enroll next year, or no, we're not going to enroll. So we utilized to stabilize the workforce, as well as to create smaller classes as we come back into next year, to have smaller class sizes into next year. So that was a good portion of the funds. Again, building capacity for the information technology because we did provide Chromebooks. We also provided about, in that information technology, about $1.6 million was approved by the Board in this year for connectivity that we assisted in paying for our families. We set up our own virtual school. We put a great bit of money into, right now, summer school. We have probably, at the end of the summer, we'll have over 10,000 students participating in at least one course in summer school. And then, of course, P P E, and then the charter school allotment is according to enrollment at charter schools, and then the indirect costs. So those were the first two federal influx of funds, if you will. Now, the S R 3 funds are what's coming next. And that sheet just has some background information to, in the law, that just has guidance thus far with the expendability of those funds. So with that, I'm going to share what we've done so far. Anchorage School District will have about $112 million. And of course, the expenditures can go through September of 2024. So we are looking at these funds as a longer term input into our students' education. So with that, we wanted to gain insight, input from the community, what worked well, what didn't work well, what are the needs for the information. And now I'll just turn over to the presentation that we have. The Board has seen this, about our actions thus far, to increase communication and get public and parent survey. We advertised on the web. We pushed it out to, our A S D Connect has 140,000 email recipients. We pushed it out to those 140,000. And just seeking input on what our parents and our partners see as a need. We also provided it to executive directors and others that partner with us in support of our children. So quite a few nonprofits, we sent it directly to them for feedback as well. It was created in a Survey Monkey and ran May 25th through last Wednesday, which would have been the 2nd, perhaps, 2nd or 3rd of June. And it was a brief survey. It had eight questions, not only about the funding, but we also wanted to put in there some information from our stakeholders about what worked and didn't work. So we asked about the spending priorities for the ARPA funds. We also said what worked well for your family, what didn't work well. We wanted that feedback. We changed school start times this year and wanted to know, as you know, in years past, we had massive work to change them. But we changed them this year by 30 minutes, and it was well received. So we wanted to understand what families thought about that, having high schools start at 8:00 instead of 7:30. We wanted to gain an insight of the count of enrollment, just for a mind's eye. What we found, though, is that until they actually show up and register, it's very difficult to find out in all the districts in Alaska. It's very, it fluctuates so much. And then the economic impact of the pandemic on families and just some demographic information. So the input, just so you have a mind's eye, it actually comes from, we pulled right from the statute, the federal regulation, if you will, in how it can be spent. And that B 1, section B 1, describes that. So that is pulled directly from law. And then, of course, we did the A S D survey plan. May 26, we had a town hall open in the evening for parents and others, just to share their thoughts about how they believe it should be spent, as well as the June 1st Board meeting. We had a specific allotted time for public testimony specifically on this topic. So I'll just share things that worked well, what they, just for insights. COVID mitigation, the safety and sanitation. Our community families that filled it out thought that. Oh, and I wanted to give the overall number, was about over 3,000 respondents. So although it went out to 140,000 people, about 3,000 people took the time to respond. And the top three things, the COVID mitigation, things that work well, online learning, and the flexibility of A S D to accommodate and innovate. Things that didn't work well, online learning. So just as divided as from the news and listening to your meetings at the community is, so is the school district's community in what they thought worked well and didn't work well. They wanted more support for teachers and training in how to use the online programs because we had some stumbling blocks. Of course, we literally took a public education system that had remained the same for 100 years and turned it on its head in a summer, really, to be able to deliver education last year. And then what was struggling was the schedule changes. And as you know, that was really related to bigger input than A S D. The Health Department worked with us, the mayor worked with us. COVID cases determine things, vaccination determine things. And so there definitely was feedback in regard to just anxiety over things changing. But as we know, what a lot of them said was, you know, you, Dr. Bishop, changed your mind too much. But we all know the bigger picture, that it's really, this whole system is run by lots of different, it's a complex problem that we had, not a very simple one. And so when one lever changed, lots of other levers changed. And it did frustrate our community, very similar to what probably your experience was with the restrictions and the emergency orders. But we are a part of the city, so we responded as well. So here's some of the feedback on, they're divided into two sections, instructional and operational, so that we can report to you. There's seven major areas where funding can be given. And on the left-hand side, those are the examples that they give of allowable uses in the federal code. So what we see is the health and safety planning, facility repairs, and incentives for recruiting and retaining staff in hard-to-fill positions. And so those are really the operational side of the House here. And as you can see, the lion's share of the responses did come to see that those were more important to people. But what we're trying to do is narrow it down to, you know, what are the most important things for the spending as we plan with the Board to really implement education and build capacity in student learning over the next three years. They did have to rate the levels, and so it was really a Likert scale of their importance, five being very important. On the instructional side of the House, these four items were big categories or big buckets. Lots of things and detail can come under them, but these are the big buckets of ideas for spending. Summer school and after-school programs address learning loss by increasing existing programs, provide new services to students to accelerate learning, and focus on underserved students. We had 686 respondents selected other, and they ranged from suggestions on recruitment and retention to reducing class sizes. Also, the open-ended questions on the operational side was also about reducing class sizes. So there was a significant look at that and feedback in that area. So coming to the three highly valued spending priorities, addressing learning loss by increasing existing programs, facility repairs, air quality, and focus on underserved students. And the number one and number three are specifically the lion's share of the past two federal funds went to those. So that was, you know, that actually provided evidence of the decision-making of the Board to really impact those areas. Those were the same areas that the past Boards have placed the funds, as it looks as though the community sees in future. So right now, again, a large part of our summer school, our fiscal year, of course, ends July or June 30th. And so our summer school is operating in two fiscal years. So we'll close out June 30th this fiscal year. And then we have already looked to really having summer school being expended as well through this learning loss in the next funds. So what administration is doing is working, taking the information and creating really an overall plan of meeting the needs of the community to bring to the Board about meeting the Board goals as well in reading math and college career readiness, focusing on the Board goals, as well as supporting the family and community needs. And that will come in August, because, again, these funds can be spent in FY '21, but also through FY 2024, September of 2024. So we did ask the question, and to what degree was your family impacted economically? And there's a range there, but about 15% of the respondents shared that it was impacted economically. And about 46% somewhat. When we, whenever we do surveys, we always ask ourselves, who are the people turning in the survey? And do they actually represent the school district? We did do outreach from our E L L, our English language learners, sorry, I use acronyms too much, and our different community groups to really share this information so they can reach their stakeholders. And if you take a look, the respondents on the survey are on the middle column there. The demographic student groups are on the left, and the district demographics are on the right. So for the most part, they met, in some categories, met our demographics and others didn't. So from here, we had additional outreach that we're requesting just feedback. And most of the time, it's going to be a phone call, you know, to the families, to the support organizations. So essentially, while our district, if you look up the most, the one with the biggest delta is the white. 40% make up our school district, and 56% of our white families, representing white students, answered it. But in black, African-American, it's close, American Indian. Asian is about half, and you could just take a look at the others. We are concerned about Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander. That is one category for which we struggle in A S D, Alaska Native and Pacific Islander. We look to really bring equity and supports wraparound for success of all students. So again, in addition to the student groups or demographics, we have who are you? And these equal more than 100 because they could pick two categories. So they could be a parent and a community member, a student and a community member, and it was self-choice. So it just gives you a mind's eye. It's not, we didn't do any regression analysis to see exactly who. So the agencies and organizations that we specifically reached out to that responded, you know, these are just a few of them. We have had, since then, again, an additional 500 respondents. We have not pulled their data and plugged it in. On the initial look, we just had to clean it. Because the dataset's so large, it didn't really move with 500 new respondents. But we just wanted to say what's important to you and the people that you support as well in our community. If we miss their voice, we wanted to be sure to hear from them. And from the organizations, these are the items that they selected. Focused on underserved students, address learning loss in summer school and after-school programs. So they're top, none of the top things for our community organizations were in the operational side of the House. And Madam President, that is our last update. And again, our timeline is working through the needs, the Board goals. The Board has a retreat, finalizing those, our theory of action and action steps to bring the Board a plan for which they will vote on the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Questions on Dr. Bishop's? So I saw Chair Rivera, and then we'll go to Perez Verdia.
Thank you. So a few questions from me first is, has the school district received the money yet?
No.
Okay. Do you have a deadline when you think you'll receive the money?
We think we'll receive the money no earlier than mid-July to August. And then we won't have to expend it until September 30, 2024.
And are you going to be receiving the money in one big batch or is it going to be split?
We'll see how the state actually allocates that. It might very well be, I'm sorry, through the President to Assembly Member Rivera. We may be spending it upfront and then getting reimbursed instead, and that's still to be worked out.
And I don't know if this is for the administration or for the Board, but policy-wise, I'm curious if you all are thinking of putting together an appropriation that expends all of the dollars? Or are you thinking of spending it in chunks? Or have you not gotten to that point yet?
We have not gotten to that point yet. That's what the work we're going to do during our retreat, which is later this week. At least begin that work.
Great. And then I guess just one final comment from me on equity. You know, it was a little bit startling for me to see the respondents in terms of the demographics and sort of the lack of respondents from some of the communities that we know have been most disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. So I know that this school board has really put equity as a sort of front and center policy. So I know and trust that when you all think about spending the money, that that's absolutely going to be front and center and making sure that the students representing those disproportionately impacted communities, that they receive benefit from this, from the dollars, and that we can hopefully, you know, get them, these families and these students sort of back up to the level that so many other communities are. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Perez Verdia, and then Mr. Weddington.
It's kind of low, so I'm having to come way down here to talk. Okay.
You can move it closer and tilt it up.
Do that. Does that work? Okay.
Mr. Rivera stole a few of my questions, so I got those answered. Thank you. So just in terms of your retreat, one of the things I think that Mr. Rivera was referring to is if there's going to be some kind of a framework built around, I mean, how it's going to be allocated? And is that your intention to have sort of something designed that looks at where the need is and how it's going to be allocated? Has that been developed, some kind of a framework, or is that something that's going to be developed?
I'll let Dr. Bishop respond, and then I'll...
Actually, it's pretty serendipitous. The board had really articulated and built goals around academic achievement and equity in reading, math, and college life career readiness. And so they've already set out goals and guardrails for priorities in the district, and they are around student learning and well-being for all. And so some of those talk about the disproportionality in select programs, hiring of mental health, you know, having mental health supports, hiring a diversified workforce. So those actually, and that alignment, if you will, that framework was in motion while this. And so not only is this budget directed towards that, but the overall district budget was also designed and built around those priorities. So it's a good thing, and I would answer yes, the framework's there unless it changes or is adjusted.
Thanks. And then just two more. One is specifically around your discussion around learning loss. And do you have any data at this point about where that learning loss, the numbers around that, and the disaggregated data there? So you know sort of where to target? And you also can tell whether the interventions that you're planning on doing this summer are going to be effective or not?
Through the Chair to Member Rivera, yes, 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 and yes. So while we don't have full sets one-to-one because we're struggling with the timing of the assessments, we use MAPGROWTH, which is a phenomenal assessment that really is a bigger picture of how students can do and perform and what's next in their learning. And we were able to deliver on a mid-year assessment, but we did not have a mid-year last year. We have to move back to 2019 for the end. And so exact timing of datasets we don't have, but we have an understanding if you take a look and put these on a percentile ranking instead of just a RIT percentages. And we lost about 10% to 13% in math and reading. And we just presented the third grade reading to the board because that was part of the goals, but three-through-nine math. So we are looking at catch-up growth and time, but we do not have data from students who remained out. 4,000 students didn't take the assessment because they are in virtual school. We have a plan for next year to bring them in, to take them because they're going to be part of ASD. So we do have a plan. We have, through the multi-tiered system of support, some actions to take to really build capacity.
Thank you. And through the chair, can I ask just a couple of the fellows real quick?
Real quick.
Real quick. So I asked about the disaggregation of that, the 10% to 13%. Were you able to disaggregate that based on demographics to see where it was disproportionate?
All of our data is shared in student groups as well as other groups that we report on. English language learners, students with disabilities, and poverty. What is that, economically disadvantaged?
Thank you. And just my last one, and it's just that the Pacific Islander population, for a long time, has been a population that has seen disproportionate, you know, rates of low academic scores and a lot of other data areas. I'm just curious about the sort of the approach to engage with that community because not only has it not only has it had disproportionately low rates in so many categories, it's also had a low representation of being involved in community meetings and a variety of things where they can actually get involved. Is there a strategy from the district's perspective about how to engage with that community in a different and a better way?
And I'll let Dr. Bishop have a few words. What I can say is that what we have as a board, well, prior to our new board, we have made a point of going out into the community and hearing those voices. Instead of having them come to us, we have been going to them. And we expect to continue that outreach, that strategy, not just internally, like with our, you know, with the parent committees that are internal, but they connect us with outside agencies as well. So we want to continue to do that kind of outreach. The other thing for the board is just improving our community engagement period. We know that that's a challenge, more of a challenge for some of our families than others. But we do expect to have a new community engagement plan. It might not be in place by August, but I'm hoping it will be up and running by early fall.
And I will just share two specific examples of how, when you look at the data, what was successful. One at the elementary level during the pandemic at Chester Valley. Noticed, and that was a partnership with United Way as well as through Nonsecular, the Latter Day Saints Church, understanding that the parents needed, working with them, a place for the students to learn and some additional supports. And so we worked with United Way and the church community to create pods, hired the young people, they were actually our former students, 19-year-olds, 20, as aides, really knew this children, and also supported the learning pods that even when school couldn't be in school, we had the learning pods in school through United Way and other daycare. So that worked. That answered specifically the need to the community. And we went into the church to find out where we knew some of the community leaders were and had meetings. Another one at the high school level, and this was last year. Part of success for our Polynesian, especially our boys, is sports. And Bartlett High, for example, just totally ran an extensive support program for the Polynesian community. Over 200 students participated, so it was a no-cut participate, engaged with the families, and really created family community around football and learning to make the two go together. So we, again, to just mirror what President Bellamy said, we find out what works, what our kids want really, and what will help them motivate, keep them successful. And the biggest improvement for Alaska Native and Pacific Islander occurred when we really specifically worked with the independent groups at the schools when they looked at their own data and said, what can we do for our kids? So those are just like details, maybe too specific, but the outreach is there to find out what, not what we want it to look like, but what they would like it to look like.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Bishop. Thank you, President Bellamy.
Thank you.
Thanks. You know, I got to say, watching last year, that you did amazing stuff with the school district and changed, like you said, so much so fast. It was very impressive. And but a lot of that was really good, too. I don't think you'll probably go back. I mean, this online learning, everybody's got their little Chromebooks or whatever. So but you're kind of looking at the priorities. It's like people are looking like, right now, I got hurt this year, fix that. But we have an opportunity with so much money, and it's the same thing we grapple with. How do you use that to move to something very different? Continue moving to something very different that could work better than what we've done for 100 years? Are you, I mean, is that still going to be on the list when we are kind of forced to look like this, too?
Through the President to Member Wellington. That was one of the reasons why we asked what worked for you and what didn't work for you. We wanted to hear, and interestingly enough, the choice of online learning to not. There was a thought, oh, we don't need ASD virtual school anymore because we're back. And actually, 3,600 people continue to choose that. And so we want to work with the families to understand, what is it? You know, what are the innovative ways that you can learn continuously without being face-to-face? And what do the blended opportunities look like? So we are, the goal for this is really to base it back into not, like, let's just fix a hurt. But our student learning has been hurting a long time. And so we are looking at this through the lens of new goals that are student-focused, that are big hairy audacious, you know, reading goals, and really implementing best practices to get those done. So I appreciate your question because it is beyond now. It is to really impact in the future of what we've learned in the capacity of people and families.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move now to the Assembly's presentation. Chair Rivera.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. All right, if we can go ahead. Thank you. So this is a presentation that the administration put together, but I will be presenting it. So this first couple of slides are just a big overview of the American Rescue Plan Act. So as folks know, the CARES Act was, for a short time, the largest stimulus package Congress has ever approved until the American Rescue Plan Act came along, and now stands as the largest stimulus package that Congress has approved. $1.9 trillion. This graph really lays out all of the different buckets that the $1.9 trillion went to. And as folks will see, that second bucket there, state and local government aid, is in that $350 billion, of which the municipality received a chunk of those funds, roughly $51 million this year, and then $51 million next year. If we can go to the next slide. So the use of our funds is very different than the school district and how the school district can use their funds. The American Rescue Plan Act had some guidance in there, and that guidance continues to get updated as Treasury and various federal departments do their work. But in essence, it was to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. That's the big overarching framework. Next slide, please. Speaking of frameworks, so within that big overarching framework, the Assembly had its own framework, which I think Mr. Perez Vedia was alluding to a little bit, where we had a variety of different priorities that we decided to focus on. And this framework, we actually spent quite a lengthy amount of time developing this through the CARES Act funds last year. And we used it again with minimum changes for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So you see at the top column there, top row there is the priorities. Economic stimulus, family support, housing and homelessness, public health and safety, community investments, direct municipal response, and contingency fund. So that second row there is timeline. So much like Mr. Wellington was asking, what are some of the short-term sort of wounds that we need to cure ASAP? And then what are some of the long-term or transformative investments that we can make? And, you know, some of the allocations we made, both with the CARES Act and with ARPA, are a blend of both of those. And then that last one, a series of guiding principles that ensures that we are using the funds in as equitable and wise and justifiable way as possible. So we looked at need, geography, feasibility, et cetera. And all of those things went to develop a variety of proposals. And, you know, when we did the CARES Act funding, it ended up being that a lot of the proposals were Assembly-generated with community support. But for the ARPA funds, I think it was reverse, it was mainly community-generated with Assembly support. So if we can go on to the next slide. So a little bit about the process to get to where we went. So we started in March, and we had a series of work sessions to just get to know a little bit about what we could use the funds for, how was it different than the CARES Act? And do we want to change any of our priorities? And so we had a series of work sessions in town halls from March through early April. And then we stopped in early April just to get a sense of what the state might do with their dollars and how the federal programs might roll out. And we did that because we really wanted to make sure that the, whatever we expended wasn't duplicative of other investments that were being made by the state or the feds and that we were really looking at filling holes or being very wise and strategic in the way that we were investing our dollars. Next slide, please. So we kicked off the, so like I said, we stopped in early April, and then we kicked off again in early May. And then at the end of May, we had allocations that we approved. And this gives you sort of the overarching what we did. So $21 million went to a continuation program. So those were programs that we funded through the CARES Act, and we continued them through ARPA funds. So things like small business grants, tourism business grants. And a lot of those programs that we think did real good in our community, and we decided to continue some of those programs. A lot of those are completing the wait lists because we had so many applicants that we ran out of the money. And we had wait lists of dozens of hundreds of businesses in a lot of different sectors who didn't get any money because we ran out. And so a lot of that continuation programs is completing those wait lists. Then we also funded technical assistance, and that's mainly to help families and businesses access some of the other federal money. So if you remember that chart at the beginning where the $1.9 trillion, breaking down all the different uses, only $325 billion is in state and local aid. But there's so much more in other types of aid, whether it's childcare assistance, restaurant assistance, PPP, or PP, yeah, EIDL, you know, all of these other different federal stimulus programs. And so the technical assistance is meant to help be a bridge and a connection between families and businesses and some of those federal programs so that we can hopefully bring in, so to speak, the cheddar for our community. Next is business and workforce developments. So, you know, that's, we really felt that it was important for us to make some long-term and strategic investments in some of the entrepreneurial spirit that we know has existed in Anchorage for a long time. But the municipality itself, outside of the 49th State Angel Fund, hasn't really had much skin in the game or investments in our entrepreneurial community. So this was part of that. We had various entrepreneurial organizations come to us and said, if you help fund these proposals, these are going to pay dividends well into the future. Then we had some specific requests in Trigia Eagle River that we were happy to fund. Housing and homelessness, a lot of those dollars deal specifically with Sullivan Arena and our mass care facilities and demobilizing those facilities. So as folks know, there are close to 400 individuals staying at the Sullivan Arena. And that arena is going to be closing off as an emergency shelter in September, partly due to a reduction in federal funding for those types of facilities. So we are really hurriedly going through the process of transitioning folks out of the Sullivan and our other mass care facilities and into either other shelter or into other permanent supportive housing or transitional housing. And so a lot of those investments are to help build up that infrastructure. The administrative lost revenue programs. So those are a variety of programs that various municipal departments either funded and in this last, in 2020 or 2021, or looking at funding into the future to assist various municipal departments mitigate or adapt to COVID-19. Nonprofits, I think there were a variety of different nonprofit proposals that we received to help folks in our community. I know one of them was a food pantry in South Anchorage and several other ones. Education support, I believe that is the Volunteers of America program, which Assemblymember Zalatell spearheaded with the CARES Act. And we decided to put another tranche of money in that with the ARPA allocations. And then the Assembly had a variety of different amendments, which I can really tell you what those are right now. So the next few slides, it's hard to probably read those on the screens, but those detail exactly line by line each dollar that was allocated. And it has them by category. So this first slide is continuation programs, next slide, please. Next slide is technical assistance, next slide, please. Then this is a lot of the business and workforce development, next slide, please. Some of the assistance for Chugak Eagle River and then the housing and homelessness, next slide, please. More housing and homelessness supports, next slide, please. And then administrative lost revenue programs, these are a lot of the requests. And I believe these also are denoted by department, next slide, please. Same, same thing, administrative lost revenue requests, same thing. These are some of the nonprofits that had some specific programs that they wanted us to fund. And all of these, you know, like I said earlier, have to deal with COVID-19 or the economic impacts of it. Next slide, please. And then education, the Volunteers of America program that we funded. And then some of the Assembly amendments, which, you know, if you follow in our CARES Act process, the Clerk's Office told me that was, to date, our most amended document ever in the Anchorage Assembly. This one had much fewer amendments than the CARES Act did. Next slide, please. I think that might be it. Yep, so I think you can find, so that wasn't very readable, those, those specific line-by-line allocations, but you can find that document on the municipal website. And we can, if folks want, we can be sure to just email that to you. So that's our process in a nutshell. So that was the $51 million. And then we're going to get another $51 million next May. So we're probably going to be doing the same thing from May or from March until May, going through a very similar process where we decide how to allocate those funds and having a variety of town halls and work sessions to get community input on those. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chair Rivera. Questions? I just have a couple. First of all, thank you for the educational support. And I like that framework that you guys developed. It's real clear. And I'm just curious, how are you guys connecting with the underrepresented? Because I would imagine you have the same problem as we do.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we faced that same problem last go-around. So I guess there's, there's two, two answers I'll give you. So there's connecting with underrepresented communities before we made the allocations and then connecting with underrepresented communities after we made the allocations. So I'll start with the after first. The municipality has a team, they're the PLNs, the Peer Leader Network of individuals who are members of a lot of these different communities who are going out and educating community members about the different programs that they are eligible to apply for in all, in various languages, just to ensure that we are reaching out to different pockets of our community who may otherwise be isolated and not have access to the information. We also funded, so that was through the CARES Act. We continued funding that through ARPA funds. We also added additional funding for outreach because we feel it's really important for us to be able to ensure that all parts of our community are equitably able to access the dollars that are going out. So that was a specific line item in our funding was outreach.
Is that part of the literacy, I'm sorry, is that, that literacy project, is that different?
The PLNs, yes. The PLNs are part of literacy project. The outreach is probably going to be going through another agency that's going to help handle the outreach. Yeah. And then, so before we allocated the funds, it was a couple of things. So like I said, we had town halls and we actually did hear from some underrepresented communities in our town halls and various nonprofits who came forward and asked, brought proposals for the Assembly to consider. But other than that, you know, I think it was really up to each individual Assembly member to ensure that we were reaching out to different communities. And I know myself, Assemblymember Zalatell and probably others reached out. So I know Assemblymember Zalatell, not to put you on the spot, but I know she reached out to the Black Chamber of Commerce and she reached out to a few different organizations just to let them know, hey, we, we have this pot of funding available. If you want any proposals, please bring them forward. And through, through a lot of her excellent work, we actually did get a lot of proposals from BIPOC-led organizations. So it was a mixture of sort of town halls where we really invited folks and then individual networking to really try to do our best. It wasn't perfect, but really tried to do our best to reach out to different organizations. And, you know, since then, we've actually heard from several organizations who, who said, hey, we didn't hear about it. So now that we have those organizations who said, hey, we, we didn't know that this was a thing, when we get that next $51 million next year, you know, we have a good list of organizations for us to reach out to who maybe didn't know about it this last go-around.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Yes, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question, I'd read, I want to say it was back in March, that there was going to be an audit by Treasury regarding the CARES funding. I was curious if that process has been completed and what was gleaned from that.
Yeah, thanks. So yes, Treasury did state that they are going to be doing audits of all 50 states. So it's not an audit that's particularly targeting Alaska or the municipality of Anchorage. In terms of what that audit is going to look like and when it's done, I imagine, it hasn't been done yet. And I imagine the delay is due to the extension of usage of the CARES Act funds. So originally, the CARES Act funds were supposed to be spent December 30th of last year. That's been delayed to December 30th of this year. So I'd imagine that once that deadline is passed and all of the funds are expended for the CARES Act, that that will be at the point where Treasury starts going through and actually completing those audits. Again, I couldn't tell you, you know, what, what the extent or level of those audits are going to be. They're going to be of all 50 states. So I don't imagine that they're going to be extremely extensive, other than likely, you know, checking, make sure that we used the dollars sort of line by line, program by program that we funded in line with the federal guidance for the CARES Acts. But other than that, I couldn't really tell you much.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to add to that, you know, we have auditors too. I think we share our auditors, but they'll be looking as well, just to make sure. Because we give the money to other groups, did they use it properly? So it's a lot of money, we audited like crazy, thanks.
Thank you. Other, yes, Member Lessons.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I was particularly interested in the Volunteers of America discussion. And that's because this year I'm serving on, as the ex officio member of the Anchorage School-Based Community Health Clinics. And I was recently at a meeting and one of the thoughts, ideas, issues that bubbled up was that there doesn't necessarily seem to be a lot of communication between Volunteers of America and the school-based community health clinics. And maybe at a larger level, there was concern that there's not a coordination happening. And so I'm not sure if that's an ASD, suggestion for ASD or suggestion for municipality, but it seems like we need to get everybody on the same page moving forward in some capacity.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, thanks for letting us know about that. I'm happy to reach out to Assemblymember Zalatell, who knows the folks at BOA to talk to.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if we'll go, we'll move now back to our agenda. We have nothing under E or F, so we are now at G. FEMA reimbursement impacts to school bond debt reimbursement. And ASD will present. Actually, would you mind coming up to the table? Would that be all right or? I'll give you my mic. I'm going to ask the existence of George Vekelis and Tom Roth.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the chair. So thank, thank you for the opportunity to address this topic. I was just thinking about it, it's two years and one, or two and a half years and one week from November 30th of 2018. By, by way of agenda, what I'm going to do or attempt to do here is to answer the immediate question that has been presented to, to the district. And then spend a little time providing a little bit of context. Try to, try to capture where I believe we are now with regards to repairs and how that, how that impacts timing of our receipt of reimbursement funds. And then between myself and Mr. Vekelis, we're happy to entertain any questions. So, so the, the question or the topic that was presented to the district is quote FEMA reimbursement impacts to school bond debt retirement. The, the, the response right now is, I don't know. That we are about, I would estimate about 18 months, two years away from making a recommendation to the school board on, on how to dispense monies through federal and state reimbursement. And I'll come back to this topic. So, so just to provide some very brief context, I, I think for those who were, who were present and many of you were serving on the Assembly, all of our buildings sustained damage in varying degrees. In fact, 16 were damaged very significantly, two of which are still offline. Right about the same time that the earthquake occurred, we, we were in the middle of the 2018 bond process. After the earthquake, the, the, the bond was, was modified by the school board. The board did add some monies specific to damages sustained by schools in Eagle River and Chugak, about $4 million. But also, I think more significantly, through the process, we, we received much more permissive language from bond counsel that basically allowed the district to use whatever monies were approved by the public for, for earthquake damage repair. So after, after that, or actually from, from the period after the bond was approved for, for several months, the, the district participated in what was a combined assessment of all buildings with FEMA representation and from the state. I, I think the municipality did likewise. This has been a continuing process. It continues today as, as Mr. Vekelis will probably be able to talk to. There are three primary categories that FEMA deals with regards to reimbursement. Category A, which was immediate repairs in the aftermath of the earthquake. Category B, which is, I'll, I'll call kind of the non-permanent repairs, kind of a cleanup category. And then the big one, and that's the, the permanent repairs. And I, I think just to emphasize, particularly for category E, these are all specific to the buildings. So every, every building that was damaged, that the district is going to receive some state and federal reimbursement. It's an individual negotiation with FEMA and then subsequent to FEMA approval through the state. So this is still ongoing. So to kind of give a quick snapshot of where we are now, we are, we are still very much in the repair process of our school buildings through, through this construction cycle this year. And then most likely through the 2022 construction window next summer. And, and to, to, to kind of just discuss, you know, the, the reimbursement process, there, there are monies that are, that are received over time, but generally it's retroactive to work having been completed. So to date, the district has received approximately $3 million in reimbursement from both the federal government and the state. Of note, the, the district did spend roughly $9 million from fund balance in the immediate aftermath. So really the first $9 million of whatever is received back from the federal government and from the state will go to repay that debt back to fund balance. We are anticipating, again, it's all negotiable. We think the total amount will be about $23 million back to the district from both federal and state reimbursement funds. So, so that's where we are. And, and again, I, I wanted to kind of bring it back to the question of, you know, why 18 to 24 months for us to come back to present options with the recommendation to the school board to dispense of those monies, whatever those, whatever that amount is, about that time period. So with that, I'm happy, we're happy to entertain any questions.
I would also, I would also add that that timeline will also give us additional information about the enrollment in our schools. And including a long-range plan would be, would be part of that, about the usage of classrooms in schools and whatnot.
Questions? Member Donnelly, could I see you?
Thank you, Madam President. There was a vote during the last budget process to focus FEMA money coming in towards bond reimbursement to reduce the overall property tax. But that vote failed, so the board did not adopt that at that time.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Other comments, questions? I'm trying to read your face there, Member Higgins. Is that a, I want to speak or I'm not sure? Okay, we'll come back to Member Higgins. Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think part of this conversation, I guess, is trying to figure out exactly what bucket of money we're talking about and, and where some of the funds should or shouldn't go. And it does have to do with whether or not there's a taxpayer benefit or, you know, potential reimbursement, if you will, to taxpayers as well. So I don't know that I can really formulate a good question on it right now. But, you know, part of the concern is whether or not taxpayers who, who have footed basically an $82 million bond last year that you're still using. But by the way, I've heard a lot of compliments about how nice it was not to have another school bond this year. But, but, you know, the idea that because those repairs obviously cost a lot of money and taxpayers were willing to foot a bill, if you will, if we're getting any kind of credit back, in other words, FEMA reimbursement, should that go directly to the taxpayers to offset that, that taxpayer bill? And I know there's always going to be needs within the Anchorage School District to pay for other things. I certainly understand that the money that was put upfront in order to make some of those repairs. But I would be willing to bet that a great deal of, well, I guess it's hard to distinguish the difference between making and a repair and then just refurbishing an entire building. So anyway, I, like I said, I'm not really sure I have a good question in that yet, but there's certainly a concern about whether or not the taxpayers should be benefiting from any of the FEMA reimbursement. So I, I will leave it at that and I'm sure you're going to have more information as you get more of an understanding of, of what FEMA will actually do and what kind of funding will come back. But that's kind of, my big question is, like I said, it's not really a question, but it's kind of the question anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Member Higgins.
Hi, I'm Quinn Steed, thank you. I, I look at this and I think about what the long-term debt has gone is in the last five years. I know it's come down, what our total debt is. But I also want to address, or let you address, the issue of deferred maintenance. We, we got about over $2 billion worth of, of property. And from a business perspective, that would be about $50 million because we've got so many roofs to be replaced, we got boiler systems, we got all the other maintenance activities at any facility. And commercial would normally budget this amount towards maintaining that. And we've got such a large deferred maintenance area, it becomes one of destruction, you know, long-term if you don't do things. I remember before I got off the school board, the first, you know, last time, it was, I remember going to some schools that we were trying to get things done with the roof leaking and the carpets wet and all the other issues with it. And so my concern is And so my concern is basically making sure that it's invested well, not necessarily, you know, hand it back, but we have a need for it. So what is the, the issue is, what is the debt done and what has the deferred maintenance? How much are we in deferred maintenance behind at this point in time in a dollar sense?
Through the chair to Member Higgins. So I did ask our Senior Director of Capital Planning for an amount this week, just to confirm, because I anticipated this might come up. We're sitting at about $752 million in deferred maintenance. And I'll defer to Jim Anderson to speak to the bond debt, but I guess you can look at it in terms of inverse lines, one going up, one going down. Jim, can you address what that current amount is and what the decline has been over the last four to five years?
I don't have the numbers for the last four to five years. I had the numbers for the last 10 or 11. About 10 or 11 years ago, the district had $250 million in deferred maintenance. In the last 10 and a half years, it's gone up from $250 million to, as Tom just briefed, over $750 million. At the same time, our bond debt was about $792 million at that time, and it has dropped to, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be right at $500 million. So it's drawn down consistently every single year for the last 10-plus years, while our deferred maintenance has continued to grow.
Member Higgins.
Madam Chair, you know, I just know in one case, a good example, this Abbott Loop community. Abbott Loop Elementary is one that almost over 10 years ago, 15 years ago, whatever it was, I mean, the fire marshal has put us on notice that that school is out of compliance. It's from a fire suppression system. In fairness, it was built to the system, but the system requirements have changed for safety reasons, and so the cost of that has escalated and the cost is going. It's just one example of things that we have deferred. And my concern is that while we're trying to maintain things, you know, and show good faith here of the money that we've received, they've got an obligation to make sure kids are safe and that we run these schools in a way that prevents further damage that just increases over time. And, I mean, repairing roofs timely and replacing them and other things prevents other damage that we've had to fix in the past bonds that I'm familiar with. And so that's what my concern is. It's not so much, you know, this dollar issue, it has to go much more so with what's in the best public interest and what's best for kids and what's safe for kids within the schools. And so that's just, I wanted that issue out there, just so that when we talk about the dollars, we're talking about the safety of kids and we're talking about having facilities that won't have much larger damage in the future if we address up to that.
Thank you. Other comments? Who has not had a chance to speak? All right, Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as to Abbott Loop, it is in the six-year plan to do a full tear-down and replacement of Abbott Loop. And I believe that the design and engineering money is scheduled to be on the next bond proposition for that. Additionally, on the next bond proposition is going to be the funding for the building of new school to replace the current Inlet View school, which is concerning because it's probably about 20% to 30% of the total proposal. So it's going to be a very heavy percentage of that, not just the typical roofs and basic maintenance and safety upgrades. I think it's really important, though, for the public to understand that Abbott Loop is safe. The lack of the fire extinguisher code was for property protection, not for safety. And so it's still a safe school as it is, the fire marshal said. So it is out of code by not having the sprinkler system, but that is not related to school safety, which is really important.
We'll go to Member Holloman.
I just wanted to ask if we're facing unexpected costs in the things that we have wet bonds for, but the construction we haven't done yet? I know residential construction has kind of jumped dramatically, but I know what we're doing is kind of different. I'm just wondering if looking out over the next year, do you see our estimates changing?
Through the board president to a member Holloman. So I think you're referencing what are some of the commodity cost increases, particularly in construction materials? The immediate answer to the question is, yes, we are seeing some of that. Some contractors have indicated that they are going to come back to the district seeking some additional monies due to increasing costs. We are, Mr. Whiting, who's not here this evening, we are preparing a memorandum on one specific project that is impacted. The monies are not, at this point, they're not extraordinary, but they are increases. And it's really, I would offer, just as an opinion, it's not something that the contractors could have foreseen back when they bid on projects. So that's where we are. In addition to the cost, the other problem that the contractors are finding is getting materials here in time. And, you know, time is money when you're on a contract and you're doing construction work. So there is delays in some of the commodities coming up here for the projects, and that does add cost to the project.
I'd like to just acknowledge that Assembly person, Allard, is on the line. Thank you for joining us. And then, did I see, I just have a question, since I don't see any other hands. Going back to Ms. Kennedy's question, is, how does that work with the Assembly, with the municipality? Have you given money back to the taxpayers before because of a bond that didn't? I'm just curious.
I am not aware of any of that happening, and I guess I wasn't talking so much about giving money back as I was paying off debt so that it didn't continue a debt for the taxpayers.
All right, thanks for that clarification. Okay, other questions? All right, yes. Member Wilson.
Just a quick question regarding the schools that are currently not being used because they were being rebuilt. Has any of the changes in costs, any of that affected those two projects or those on schedule to be completed and as previously scheduled?
They're on schedule and they're on budget at the current time, yes. And they are planned to be opened, you know, this summer. So they'll be open for business in September, or the latter part of August as well.
Yes, Member Wilson.
You know, regarding using FEMA funds to pay back debt, I mean, in a sense, we have, and I think you have too, is because we borrowed from our savings essentially with the expectation we pay it back, and we've extended the kind of our rules for the savings level so we can spread it out over a number of years, which, because, you know, you won't get your FEMA money right away. But there is a, and I think those we could put on as a property tax because of the emergency expenditures and so on, but the expectation is we will not.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to, thank you, Mr. Roth and Mr. Vicalis. That brings us to public participation. We have one person that signed up. Danielle Kemp, are you on the line?
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Oh, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you to everybody for this opportunity to speak. My name is Danielle Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher in the ASD, and parent of two ASD kids. I'm also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators, whose mission statement is to champion equity and education for communities of color in order to achieve equality. I believe that ASR funds discussed today definitely should be used for the following. Number one, making sure that we have racially equitable curriculum within the ASD. Number two, holding annual racial equity training for all staff to grow culture of equity knowledge and advancement throughout the ASD. But most importantly, number three, bringing on extra staff, in particular people of color, to make up for the gap that we see in ASD. We should not be cutting educators at this time. As you know, teachers are the most important part of a child's education, neck to the parents. As such, we must use this funding opportunity to fill those gaps that we know exist. Prime example, my school, Russian Jack, has been cut by two teachers, but we're expecting more students this coming year. All right, so this situation needs to be rectified. Hiring teachers of color is especially important because research shows that all students benefit from having teachers of color. Study after study, from the Learning Policy Institute to the Centers for American Progress to the National Center of Educational Statistics, has shown empirical evidence which reveals that when taught by teachers of color, students of color in particular have better academic performance, improved graduation rates, and are more likely to attend college. That is of the utmost importance in the ASD, where students of color make up to 60% of the student population, yet whose academic opportunities and outcomes are well below their white counterparts. Couple that reducing class sizes, then we will meet and exceed the ASD's goal in reading math proficiency in life, college, and career readiness. And just as important, the more educators of color we have, the better we will be able to fight racism on all levels, as they bring their lived experiences and unique perspectives on racism that their white counterparts simply don't have. So the ASD must make this a top priority for our students' sake. Lastly, I would like to invite everyone listening to join the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators at 10:30 on Saturday mornings on our Facebook page, as we have guests read books to children and mentor to young adults as part of our early education and literacy program. Some of our guests have been Senator Elby Gray Jackson, Representative Ivy Spawnos, Elise Galvin, Ayu Kuzantak, our board members Kelly Lessons and Margot Bellamy and more. Assemblymember Chris Conson and Mr. Connor Brooks are reading this Saturday, June 12th. So I hope to see y'all then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. And I need the record to show that I did skip ahead on the agenda. I did not do member comments, so I do apologize. So I'd like to start, though, with Ms. Allard and Ms. Alatell, if you're on the line, would you like to make comments at this time? If so, it's star six.
President Bellamy, can you hear me okay? This is Member Zalatell. So thank you for the very informative presentations, and to Member Lessons' point about Volunteers of America and the behavioral health work being done in the district, I've already sent a message to connect with the Volunteers of America CEO so that we can have that conversation and see where the disconnects are. So thanks for bringing that to our attention, since it was meant to be integrated in with what efforts the district had. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell.
Can you hear me okay? This is Jamie Allard.
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Allard.
Thank you. I thought the conversation was great, and other than that, I don't have a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's just go around the room. We'll start, we're going to start in the middle today. We'll start with Ms. LaFrance.
Green, is it on?
It's on.
I guess I had it right the first time. Well, welcome to all the new board members to our first joint meeting, and thank you, President Bellamy, for the discussion. I appreciate the information and looking forward to working with all of you. Also wanted to echo what Mr. Weddleton said about, and just some gratitude for the work you all have done on the school board and in the administration this last year. It's been a doozy, and thank you for that. I mean, as a parent of three kids, I've seen firsthand some of those challenges, and also very much appreciate the desire to keep what worked for some people and just the positive forward momentum in general. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
And thank you. Member Higgins? No comments? Member Donnelly?
Two big factors that's going to hopefully, well, not hopefully, but may influence the six-year plan and what bonds go before the public next year will be what kind of population we have in our schools after this pandemic, because there may be disparate impacts from school to school to school. We've already got some schools that are in the 70%, 80% range of being occupied, so there might be some more dramatic swings than we currently have. And the Assembly should be aware that the board has instituted an ongoing process of reviewing the districting involved with schools, and looking forward to getting that as an option to deal with and when it comes to focusing on what schools need work or how to prioritize the work of schools and the possibly of changing boundaries. Probably quite a few areas we should have been looking at over the last decade that we didn't do out there, and so I'm very optimistic about this new ongoing process, and it may have a significant impact upon how the bonds are structured going forward.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. And coming right around, yes?
I didn't have much to say, but my recollection with any times the school boundaries were changed, it was an absolute nightmare to make that ongoing. Good for you. Is that what I'm hearing that you're doing?
Every 10 years.
Oh, it's every 10 years. Oh, good. I'm glad you spaced it out. So it's got to be done, but I know it's a challenge. So welcome, new board members.
Thank you.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Assembly for the educational funding that was put forth for the Volunteers of America to help our students with behavioral health challenges. I've been a therapeutic foster parent for the past 16 years, so I've worked with, it's very personal to me, the students that are being helped with this and the assistance that the school district staff and educators could use in that arena. So as many opportunities to partner with community organizations to really try to support our students and help them progress to whatever they choose to achieve is very appreciated. So thank you guys for that support.
Thank you. Now we're going to Ms. Kennedy. Go the other way.
Switching directions on this, thank you. Thank you, I do appreciate the comments. I certainly appreciate being back in person, so that's always great to actually see real faces. So, but I do also want to say that my community, there are a lot of children in my community that are pretty excited this fall about having, getting either back into their school, or for some kids, the seventh and eighth graders that'll be going to Greening Middle School, they'll be in a school they've never been in before. So there's quite a bit of excitement and appreciation for all the work that's gone into getting those schools, including Eagle River Elementary, up and running again. So thank you for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Holloman. Okay. Jacob. The Redford D, it's on you. They passed.
They passed, huh? All right, never passed, never passed, no. Well, I want to give my thanks to this meeting as well. I enjoyed the conversation, enjoyed the information, and felt like it was a very substantive meeting. So thank you for your time repairing the information. Wanted to welcome the new members and looking forward to working with all of you. Want to extend my appreciation also as a father of two kids who are in school. It was a difficult year, and we made it through.
And through all the trials and tribulations, I really do feel like that you kept kids in mind. And I know it was a tough, tough year. So thank you for all that work. And thank you for summer school. One of my children is in summer school and I appreciate that because the learning loss is very real. It's, it's, it's real for many kids. And I think that the most we could, the more we can do to address that and get kids back on track, the better. Just, just want to say how much I appreciate the work all of you do and we're looking forward to working with you over this next year. So thanks.
Thank you. Yes, the birthday guy.
Thank you, Madam President. And welcome to the new school board members. Really looking forward to working with you. You know, today we had a little bit of a light agenda. These agendas are typically not this light. They're pretty packed. We typically have to extend the meeting once, if not multiple times. But the fact that this is a light agenda today is no indication that there isn't a lot going on. There is so much going on with the school district and with municipality. I really want to thank the school district for everything that you're doing for our students. And then moving on into the future, I think it would be, I want to put this in folks' ear, I think it would be great for us to start talking, when it's appropriate, about the American Jobs Plan and the American Families Plan. The, one of those looks like it might be passed sometime this fall. And then we'll see about the other one. I know the assembly has already started talking about the American Jobs Plan and particularly how we can be workforce-ready. And I think there might be a lot of opportunities in the school district for that as well. So that might be something we want to add on future joint agendas. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll wrap things up here in our split here. It's a great introduction and a great reminder of how important the work that these two bodies do and how, you know, the stewardship of these additional federal funds at the municipality level, at the school district level, matters enormously if we're thinking about putting our kids first. So I look forward to listening to the community, to working with my fellow board members and hearing from assembly members as we move forward to put our kids first. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop.
Thank you. I just wanted to add and let the assembly know. I really appreciated the leadership of Mayor, Acting Mayor Quinn Davison, really finishing up and assisting us with getting students back into school was, I just really appreciated her leadership at a time that we needed it. Thank you.
Madam President, everybody got to say something. We've got time left on our agenda. Could I ask one question to the assembly?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Right before COVID hit, we were examining the possibility of having a district, a school district policy similar to the assembly, the policy the assembly adopted on community workforce agreements and also possibly going with a responsible contracting. And I was wondering if you had any guidance for us? Because you all talked about that a lot and came up with a plan. And I'd be interested in your guidance and how it's working.
So I think probably, if I may, Madam President, thank you. So probably the first guidance I would give you is to talk to Ron Hadden. He was essential in both of those, responsible contracting and in the community workforce agreement. He has a lot of experience with those. And now that the community workforce agreement has been in place for a while, he probably has a lot of experience implementing that. So he could probably give you some good tidbits. Other than that, I might talk with the assembly members who helped craft that, which neither of them are here, Christopher Constand and Forrest Dunbar, were two of the assembly members. And apologies if I'm forgetting other folks.
Okay. And yes, we are ahead of ourselves in time. But I do, would like to also thank the assembly for all of your work. I love these meetings. Well, love might be too strong, but I really do. I do look forward to them because I, you know, aside from the community council meetings I don't get to see, and some of you aren't even in my, you know, you're not even in my council meetings. But I do look forward to those. And I keep up with what you're doing through the community council meetings. And sometimes I do watch. But we have had a lot of challenges. But they've also opened the doors to a lot of opportunities for our kids. And, you know, just looking at summer school right now, it's different. Believe me, it's different. It's not your, it's not the summer school my grandmother, your grandmother went to. It's a whole different summer school. And it's those kinds of opportunities. And I think giving ourselves, thinking outside of the box, reimagining education, reimagining, as you've done, what we can do with our communities, how we help our communities. I think the work is just so clear and it's so necessary. So I join Member Lessons in, in just stating again how important it is that our, these bodies work together and that we do be good stewards. And I look forward to continuing to work with you. So that's my first meeting. It was a light one, Felix. But I think we got through the agenda. Our hosting our next, our next meeting will be September 13th at City Hall. And then we will host again in December. And with that, I will.
Just a quick point of order, Madam President. I'm not familiar. Do, does the school district allow members of the public to attend? Were there anyone else for public testimony?
Oh, that's a good point. We do allow others to attend. And I don't know that they signed up to testify. They're shaking their head. No? Okay. All right. But thank you for that. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.